So I don't forget, I need you to rest. But know to do that. Yeah, good morning, everybody. Nice to be here. My name's Tom Addis. I'm the Executive Director, CEO of the Southern California PGA. This morning, we have six of our fellow staff with us that I'd like to introduce to you and just want to say that I appreciate their hard work for what they do and what they do for you guys, so for everybody here. First of all, Alex Teagles, Alexandra. Alex is in charge of this meeting and in charge of our major meetings as well as our player development programs and works very closely with all of you in Southern California as well as Mrs. Gatch. David Myrtle, our Foundation Director, David, and does a great deal of our operational stuff and very valuable. Rob Keller, you all know, is our Tournament Director. Rob does an outstanding job and is well-known around the country for the job that he does. Sharon Kirkman, I think Sharon's in here. Sharon in yet? She's still outside. You all know Sharon, our Membership Manager. And at one time or another, at one point in your career, you have or you will have talked with Sharon, so it's a great pleasure. Sharon later on this year celebrates her 15th anniversary with us, too. Brienne Lockard is our Communications Manager. Brienne started in March, was it?
Yes.
And has done an outstanding job. You see some subtle changes in our program magazine and some of our other media output, and you see some gradual changes and good changes, and hopefully you'll open our emails that we send you so you can see some of those changes. And Brienne's done an outstanding job with that and other programs. A brand-new person, staff person with us coming from the South Central PGA is our new Junior Golf Director, Andrew Zeller. Andrew's one of the top, and soon will be the top, Junior Administrator in this country, and we're happy about that, and we're happy to have Andrew. So that's our staff, and again, I'm very proud of the opportunity to work with everybody and thank you guys very much for all you do. One more announcement. Do you want me to do that now?
Please.
Sure, thank you, since I'm here, then you won't have to put up with me anymore. On August 27th, we have a Wounded Warriors Clinic with Joe Gromen at the Navy Golf Course, and you've seen it in the E-News and you'll continue to see it, and we'd like, if any of you are available, to help with the clinic, please contact Joe or anyone at the golf course. And then on September 18th, we have a Disabled Veterans Orientation and Clinic at Cypress. So I'd recommend that you try to get involved, they're great programs, and whether it be for Folds of Honor. We also have Patriot Day coming up, Labor Day weekend, so you'll see some information in regards to Patriot Day. As a matter of fact, the Southern California Golf Association is going to help us publicize to our golfing public in regards to Patriot Golf Day. So please do whatever you can in that regard, and we would appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Prin.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. I'd like to take just a moment to acknowledge some of the past Presidents of your sections who were in the room with us this morning. Mr. Tom Sargent, Mr. Tom Addis, Jason Taylor, David Foster, and Bill Halbert. Gentlemen, thanks for being here. I will tell you that you've made an excellent choice being here this morning. We're going to have some fun, and these meetings have taken on a bit of a different context. And one of the things that I find most enjoyable is the opportunity to talk about whatever it is you all want to talk about without having an agenda. Literally, being able to explore any subject that might be important to you. We can share joy and sorrow, and we can talk about things that are meaningful or silly. Whatever it is you'd like to discuss is what we're going to do. You'll notice a banner over here. It says, "Remembering the Past and Embracing the Future." And one of the things that I find quite meaningful, John Mason and I have talked about this for years, and John began a program in San Diego where we've been able to acknowledge and appreciate the wisdom and guidance that has come from some of our PGA members who have been seasoned, if you will, people that have been around 50 and 60 years, and then to sort of juxtapose that against a brand-new PGA member or apprentice who might have a completely different worldview than that older member. So with that, we've got a true legend with us this morning, an advocate of junior golf is no other, and a very great man, a historical figure here in Long Beach, and I'd like all of you to welcome Lynn Connett, please.
Well, that's very nice. I'm sorry when I introduced myself, I really didn't say what I thought or what I wasn't prepared to speak, but I should have said the Marine Memorial Golf Course. I should have said San Gabriel Country Club. I should have said Los Verdes Golf Course, and I should have said Lakewood Golf Course. I was affiliated and served all four of those golf courses as a professional, 1951 to 202. I tap danced to work every day, and I enjoyed every minute of my career. Jeff was asking me to talk just a little bit about how it was in the olden days. Well, I give it to you olden days for sure. I started my career in golf business in 1940, 1940. I was a 13-year-old caddy. We received 75 cents a round. If we were careful, hustled, rate bunkers, read the greens properly, held the flag stick, we made a dollar. I used to get there daylight, so I'd get the first job out. Sometimes in the summer, I could catch a second loop and about left my club, make $2 in a day. Not too bad for Saturday, not too bad for Sunday. A little later, like all young guys of my generation, I was anxious to go in the military. So when I was 17-years-old, I graduated a half-year early, so my mother signed my enlistment papers, and I could enlist at age 17. I went down and joined the Marine Corps. As it worked out, no combat, but I will tell you a little story about that, too. I was lined up with about 1,000 Marines, and we were all loaded and ready to land in the invasion of Japan. That's when they dropped the bomb. Of all those thousand guys in that formation, I must tell you, not a single one thought that the bomb was a bad idea. All right. I left the Marine Corps and went to, that's the way it was. I know it's nasty now, but you weren't standing in line in 1945 either. All right, here we go. I went to USC on the GI Bill. It was a great opportunity for me, wonderful program that the government had. I played on their golf team senior. I was number one ma'am, won Southern California Intercollegiate, which was their premier tournament at the time, represented the West and the East Wealth Matches, which Arnold Palmer was on the East Team. Finished on my senior year in the top eight back at Albuquerque in the National. I came home, I knew it was time to go to work. I had interviewed up in San Francisco at Macy's Department Store. Sounded like interesting. I also interviewed at Sears and Roebuck's. Sounded pretty interesting, too. I last interviewed with a little company called WT Grants. They had, I thought, a manager program that was interesting, and I'd move along fast. They were going in small stores. I was assigned to El Paso. I came by the Santa Anita Golf Course where I played a lot of my amateur golf and said goodbye to my dear friend Alan Cook. That's David's dad. So Alan and I did, as we often did, had a glass of beer together. And Alan said to me, he says, "You know, Lynn, you don't want to go to El Paso." And I said, "No, I don't want to go to El Paso, Alan." He says, "You want to be a golf pro." I said, "I know I want to be a golf pro, Alan, but it's pretty tough." He said, "The freeways are coming through, they're closing golf courses. Housing tracks come through, they're closing golf courses. Cemeteries are full, golf courses have been dug up. It's tough going." Alan says to me, "I'm first assistant here at Santa Anita." He says, "I got a little offer here. He says, "You come to work for us, you be a closer. Come to work before any afternoon and close it up. Wait for those rent clubs to come in. Don't leave till the last set's there, four to nine. Saturday and Sunday, you work eight hours in the shop, okay?" I said, "That's six days. What about the seventh?" He says, "The seventh day, you clean the driving range. You pick the driving range." I says, "Okay." Well, nobody here knows how you picked the driving range in 1950, but I'll tell you. There were a lot of hickory shafts around in those days. You took a tin can on the end of that hickory shaft, and you picked those babies up just like that. I could clean a pretty good driving, I done it as a kid in high school, too. I picked the range in about two and a half for three hours. That was the way it started for me, and I was grateful to my pal Alan Cook for giving me that opportunity. I made about $40 a week for that. As Alan pointed out, he says, "You know, you can teach quite a bit on four days, and you also can play a little bit." It surprised me just by little fundamentals, and passing on my teaching schedule got fairly busy. I also had the good opportunity of falling under the influence of Paul Runyon. Paul was the head professional up at Annandale in those days, and I was an assistant at Santa Anita. And I had played some with Paul in the little tournaments that we had around Southern California. The Montebello Open, the Santa Anita Open, the Fox Hills Open, so on and so forth. Paul called me, he said, "Lynn, I want you to get this one word." He said, "Lynn, I want you to help me. I am giving free junior golf lessons to the kids in Pasadena up at Jimbo Fine's Driving Range on Colorado Boulevard." I said, "Jeez, Paul, I'd love to, but you know, I got a game Monday morning. Play dollar skins, I know I could make $10." Paul said, "I think you should help me." That telephone went down. Well, fortunately for me, I worked with Paul all that summer. Monday morning, side by side with a guy. Let's remember, Paul had won the National Championship in 1938, 12-years before. Can you imagine a national champion out there giving free junior golf lessons? Paul was at Annandale at the time. Free junior golf lessons for the kid. Great opportunity for me. Enjoyed every minute of it. All right, I'm moving along. George Lee, another great golf professional, along with Alan Cook and Runyon, are the three best I knew. George called me, and he said, "Lynn, you're in the Marine Corps, weren't you?" And I said, "Yeah." He said, "They're opening a golf course down at Camp Pendleton. He said, "Billy Bell designed it. Only the military can play it. Don't know what kind of a job it is, but you know, be a place for you to start. Why don't you go down?" So I went down and interviewed. I liked him. The guy that was in charge of the committee was a guy named Conkle. He was in charge of the Naval Hospital. He said, "Lynn, we liked your interview." He said, "We got a problem, though. About 25 women, officers' wives, don't think they've been cheated properly, don't think they've been taught properly." He said, "How much should they come down and give lessons?" "Yes, sir, Captain, I'll be there." So I came down, used some of my Paul Runyon instruction on those ladies. I drove back home to Arcadia, and Captain Conkle's on the phone. He says, "You're hired, come on to work." All right, that was pretty good. I didn't tell you I got $2.50 for my lessons at Santa Anita. Well, went to Camp Pendleton, went to the Marine Memorial, and I signed, not for $2.50, but for $1.50, dollar and a half. That was for private lessons. I also gave free lessons to the kids, the juniors. I gave free lessons to any young Marines that were interested, and once a week, I gave lessons to the officers' wives for $250 a month. Now, hold on, you think $250 a month and dollar and a half lessons, how are you going to live? Think about it. I bought a three-bedroom house, four blocks from the beach, for $11,000. My payments were $65 a month. So $250 a month didn't look so bad, and even my $1.50 lessons, I had them a little bit, too. It was an interesting place. I bought playing opportunities. We did a good job. We still had no staff, but there were a lot of pro-am's, no overhead. We paid $10 to play. We hired a guy just part-time to be our announcer, Speck Hammond. Speck could turn the 40 golf pros into the money, sent it up to Howard Smith or Harry Vassler, he'd write the checks, and out you'd go. Those were our pro-am's. How about the tour? Anybody could play on the tour? I played in the San Diego five times when I was down there. You say, "Five times? Would you go to tour school?" Absolutely not. In those days, in those days, there were about 125 guys in the winter that were following the tour, following the tour. You could go down to San Diego, and if you could shoot par, you'd qualify for the San Diego Open. I did play five times, made the cut three times. I played the San Diego Open where Tommy was a professional one time. One of the last times I saw Billy Casper. He was on the practice team, he looked up and he saw me. He says, "I don't hook anymore." He's working on that fanny a little bit. I started my junior golf lessons. I also started a junior golf tournament down there. I played in the National PGA at that time. I was impressed how they started me, so I decided I'd start my kids the same way. So I announced every kid to the tee. "Yes, sir, playing from Recreation Park on Long Beach. John Merrick now driving." I did that for all the kids, and they kind of liked them. I gave my, I just finished my 57th consecutive Lynn Connett Junior Golf Championship. I was on the tee from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and I announced every kid off that tee. All right. From there, I had an opportunity. My friend Ellie Byans, this is the way jobs were given in those days. Ellie Byans came to me, she said, "Lynn, everybody's interested in making a little change." I said, "Ellie, this little job down at Pendleton is not as bad as you might imagine, but everybody wants to do better." He says, "All right. He says, "I'll turn your name in. Don't know what'll happen, but I'll put your name in." All right, did that. Two weeks later, I got a very nice letter from a man named Wend Fuller from San Gabriel Country Club. He said they'd like to meet me, they heard nice things about me. "Meet us up at Irvine, we don't want you hanging around San Gabriel." Went to Irvine, very nice, played well with my old persimmon heads, and all shot 66. That's awfully good for me. That was a very good score for me. They were impressed. So they talked a little more, and they said, "Look, we got a member up at Big Bear. He said, "They'd like to, they'd like to meet you. Would you go out to Victoria in Riverside and meet us out there?" I said, "Yeah, I'd like to do that." I never played Victoria. Went out with my persimmon clubs, damn it, and shot 66 at him. They said, "You're too good, you wouldn't stay with us." I said, "This is excellent. It's like lightning strikes twice, I'm not that good. If you don't hire me, don't, because I shoot that 66." Anyway, they did hire me, and I would like to tell you, don't let anybody hear from San Gabriel, but I'll tell you, it's a magnificent golf club, and they knew how to treat their pros. They did indeed. With that to San Gabriel, I took my junior lessons. My some of the kids, free on Saturday morning. Some of the kids that I started with, one's been club champion seven times, he's been club president twice. Lessons weren't too bad. I also took my little junior golf tournament with me. They embraced the idea. San Gabriel is a place that loves their tournaments. Happy there. One time, I was running the tee, and the guy came to me, and he said, "I'm from the county. He said, "Now we're building a new golf course down on Talasur." I said, "I heard a little bit about it. They say it's a pretty place." He said, "We're going to host some major championships down there." He said, "Go to go and take a look at it." So I went down, while I will say, it truly was a magnificent place. Anybody that lives by the ocean knows that every day isn't good. Matter of fact, a lot of days aren't very good at all. This was one of those days I could sit up there and I could look at San Diego Country Club, and I also could look up at Pebble Beach. Just a perfect day. I'm driving back with my wife, she says, "It really was pretty." I say, "That's quite a place." She says, "You're not going to go down there, are you?" I said, "No, no, no, it's out of there." But I got home, you know, I'm raised around Santa Anita, I know the numbers pretty well. I thought, oh, just for fun, I'll put in an aggressive bid. Who knows? I like San Gabriel, nothing to lose. I put aggressive bid in. They called me, "This is Durham Johnson, want to talk to you. You're one of the five bidders that we want to talk to. We like your bid, we want an interview." Well, I took the interview, and they gave me the job. So now, I got to resign from San Gabriel, which is not easy, and wasn't easy, very hard to do. I went to Los Verdes in 1964. I want to emphasize, and that's the difference, and it really isn't a difference, but those jobs, the county jobs are by bid, by bid. Don't fool around, that's not political. You have to bid. So I won the bid down at Los Verdes. All right. With me, I took my free junior golf lessons. By now, I charged $3.50. 50 cents a lesson. That included the balls, included use of the driving range, and a putting championship that we would put on. Also, I hosted a lunch for all the kids, for moms and dads. Pretty good deal for $3.50, sure. All right, I used to invite the Director of Parks and Recreation down, and he would give the prizes. All right, that wasn't such a bad thing either. One time, I said to him, "We should waive the green fees on here for the kids, it's too expensive for them to play." His words is, "I don't have any problem with that." So at all county golf courses, 17 county golf courses, there are no green fees charged during that tournament. My friend Ralph Crater got that put in there. Los Verdes is a great place. I enjoyed my lessons, my free lessons. I enjoyed the tournament. By now, host the 10 or 12. The county came to me in 1979, and they said, "We've run into some terrible problems. Our sprinkler system never works at Lakewood. The clubhouse is shut tight, there's holes in the roof, the windows are knocked out. Nobody wants to play there, nobody wants to work there. Would you go down and give us six months down there, see if it can give them this idea?" The county, by now, was pretty sure I was generating good income for them at Los Verdes. Went down to Lakewood and extended the golf shop building, extended the cart barn. We finally got the clubhouse open, and I bid that job, too, of course. They made it clear. But, you know, after being there six months, I knew I'd have bid it pretty well. I bid the job and won that. I stayed at Los Verdes until 202. I left Los Verdes in 1998 after 34 years. I stayed Lakewood for 22 years. Those were good years, too. I had the good fortune of meeting Melissa Stevens there. Melissa and I worked together for 12 or 13 years. I had a car dealer, really a crab's what he was. He was half-drunk and half-crabbed, but he came to me and he says, "Lynn," he said, "I order clubs from you all the time. The only one I want ordered from is for Melissa. She never makes a mistake. If ever, ever want to lose her," he said, "I'll take her. I'll put her to work." Melissa, unusual woman, she's a good player, too. Gentlemen, I told you a little bit how it was in the old days. I won't tell you it was better. I don't tell you it was worse, but I was telling you it was different, wasn't it? No staff, really, till about 1964. That's not the way to do it, of course, for a full program like we have now, of course not. But we managed pretty well. I wanted to tell just one little story about Tommy's dad. I was educational chairman after I went up to San Gabriel. I went to the Spaulding guy, Tommy, and I said, "I can bring 50 golf pros down here if you let me use your storeroom, no charge." He said, "Yeah, great idea. Can we show them the line?" I said, "Yeah, after the clinic you can." He said, "Fine, I'll get a few bottles, too." I said, "Forget the bottles till after the clinic, we're there to learn." So I invited Tommy's dad, Jerry. Jerry was a very articulate guy. He had some opinions on how the golf clubs should be swung, and I'd say all 50 of our guys were just mesmerized by what Jerry has to say. We did it later on with Paul Runyon. Paul had walked over broken glass to help the golf team, and he came down for our clinics. We had Guy believe he was a master at group instruction. We had some pretty good little clinics, and I think they were worth doing. We didn't have a staff, but we managed all right on that, too. Again, that isn't practical now, and you shouldn't do it that way, but we did it, and it was okay. I'd say it's been quite a journey for me, from 50-cent, 75-cent fees for a caddy to $100 fees for caddies that just walk along and carry four putters. Why a little difference from $2.50 lessons to $50 lessons? But the whole way has been nice for me. I told you a minute ago, I tap danced all the way and it wouldn't change a thing. I look forward to seeing you guys in the course in the not-distant future, too.
Hall of Fame member, 60 years plus. What a leader and what a mentor and what a guiding light you've been for so many golf professionals over so many years. Thank you for sharing your story with us. In contrast, brand-new to the business of golf or slightly new, recently elected as a PGA member here just a few months ago, I'm happy to introduce Rick Wooton. Rick, please.
How are we doing, everybody? Can you guys hear me? Yeah, all right, good. Well, Mr. Connett, it's an honor to call you. I wish I could have gone first. It's already, I'll be quite nervous, speaking in front of a lot of people that I look up to, even the ones I don't know. I know you guys have been setting the tone for everything in this game and this business, so this is very difficult for me, and hang in there, I'll try and keep it quick. I don't have nearly the history or the talent in the golf game as Mr. Connett. I started out as a baseball player, 17-years worth, all the way through college, till my shoulder decided I couldn't pitch anymore, and I had to find something else to do. And one of my buddies was good at chasing a little golf ball around. He invited me out, and I shot about 125. That was the greatest thing I've ever seen. He shot 66, by the way, but I didn't see him all day. He was in the middle, and I was checking out the scenery. I was instantly hooked, was on a college scholarship and a couple of loans, and that paid for two or three rounds golf a week. And I was pretty good, till it ran out, and... And I was pretty good till it ran out and decided I better get a job. Might as well be in golf. So I asked that same buddy, "You got any jobs out there? You know Indian Hills Golf Club, they hiring anybody?" And he said, "Yeah, somebody played yesterday." Well, I went in to be a part-time in the cart barn. Worked eleven days in a row, the first day, all the way through. Not sure how part-time it was, I worked full-time from then on. So it was pretty cool. I was, you know, in college and I would get up at four-thirty and I would drive to work and I would work an eight-hour shift and I'd play two rounds of golf and go home. Played about seven to twelve rounds of golf a week. Passed a player ability test after eighteen months. Probably the only incredible thing I did playing wise was, you know, passed that pretty quick. Haven't been able to beat anybody in this room for a long time, but that's all right. I enjoy the game. I've learned that teaching the game is, you know, a lot better, a lot more fulfilling since I can't beat anybody out here. I enjoy teaching kids like Mr. Connet. We do free junior golf lessons a few times a year. We run a six-week clinic and, you know, the times when the game got tough, that's what's kept me around it, watching these kids who truly enjoy it. And they, they keep me coming back and wanting to play, you know, seeing just how great they think it is. And, you know, I think back to when I shot a hundred and twenty and how much fun it was. Now I shoot seventy-seven, I want to throw my clubs away. But I keep coming back because it's a wonderful game and there's wonderful opportunities out here. You know, I'm very thankful for the opportunities I've had, for the people I've worked around and worked with. I've gotten, gotten to know a lot of great people out here. And I just want to say, from the business standpoint, I wasn't taken to these meetings. I was, it was hard for me to figure out when they were and I finally got everybody to get my emails and I got all these emails and I went to a few meetings. And after a meeting, I just want to go to work. You know, I learned things here from everybody and I'm excited about going to work. And I think we need to get our apprentices and our new guys out here. Need a lot more young guys out here because you really leave a meeting just excited to get out and do the things you hear about. To hear about these free junior golf lessons and the people that Mr. Connet met is, you know, absolutely incredible. And I'm meeting incredible people all the time. You know, a lot of times you don't find out till later just who, who you were hanging around and it's, it's pretty neat. So I think we need to communicate with all of our, all of our younger guys in the shop and the guys in the program and make sure they get out here and they see what it's really, truly about. Like I said, I, I had to be a bit self-motivated in the beginning. When I got my next job, I was pushed very hard and that was even better. I liked that road better. Tell you guys about my bookwork program. It took me a long time. Think I got a PhD because I was there for quite a few years. The first few years, I wasn't motivated to do it. I loved golf, but I needed to go to work and get a paycheck and do everything I could to keep my job there. And nobody really cared whether or not I finished my bookwork and it was a shame and I didn't take the self-responsibility to finish it on time. And I did some catching up. And I did get my next job at Reno Valley Ranch. Mr. Johnson here, he gave me the motivation I needed. I would not have finished the program as much as I loved golf. I didn't have that self-motivation, but I got some motivation. I got, I finished each level in about a year or less. Got back on track and, like he said, got my membership in February. Probably the greatest thing, next to getting married, those two things really are the two greatest things that have happened to me. You know, I get to come out here now in meetings, I get to participate now instead of sitting in the back and hoping nobody notices I'm back there. You know, I get to come up and talk, which is quite an honor. Quite embarrassing as well, but quite an honor. And now, now I'm on the board with our chapter and, you know, that's why I'm here at these meetings, to sit here and learn what the true pros do and what they talk about in their meetings and, you know, just get an idea of how we can help. And I think I have a pretty fitting role in the chapter. It's communication. A lot of people here probably, if you're in the Inland Empire chapter, you probably got tons of emails from me. So I plan to bug everybody just about every Friday. But I think that's, that's what's needed. It's just communication because it's tough. You know, you're at a job and, and you need to get something done. Sometimes you don't know what it is. You come out to a meeting and you see what other people are doing. You see the junior programs drawing attention to the golf courses and bringing in golfers. You see what other people do and you learn a lot, a great deal at these meetings. So for me, you know, I'm on the other end of the spectrum. I'm just learning and just, you know, following the examples, having a great time. Never tap danced to work, but I'm going to have to learn. Sounds like a great way to get there. Sounds like better gas mileage. But I, you know, I just, I just appreciate being out here. You know, I like putting on a suit, I like going out and learning. I like helping kids. I like being around good people and playing a game. You know, I go to work and I play a game. I clock out, I play a game. And that was, I guess, one thing I forgot I wanted to mention was, you know, make sure you guys play and make sure your apprentices play. I think that's the reason most people signed on to be a golf professional was to play and it's very easy to get behind a counter and forget that. But I play probably still five times a week and, you know, I love every minute, minute of it and that's the reason I'm here, to help people learn to play golf, to play golf myself and to watch people come in and talk about a hole-in-one that bounced off a rock and went in. You know, there's no greater joy than just seeing the people that come through the shop and talk about, you know, one birdie in the last three rounds. It's the greatest thing and it keeps them coming back. And sometimes we take advantage of that, forgetting how tough this game is. And so I hope everybody just motivates their people to play and just continue to grow the game because I love this career and I don't want to see it go away. So thank you guys for putting up with me and Mr. Connet, it was an honor to follow you and thanks for your time.
Rick, thanks very much. He's been a rising star and certainly a significant feature to our professional staff and a newly elected board member in his chapter. Awful proud of what you've accomplished. You know, and I think about Mr. Connet and Mr. Sargent, Mr. Addis and many of those who have provided and given a roadmap for many of us to follow. And it's really important, Rick, that some twenty-five or thirty years from now when you're at a meeting like this, that you have inspired someone to follow the path that you're currently on. It's good stuff and thank you for sharing your story. I want to share something with you this morning. It's the Ryder Cup captains video before we go into our open forum. And it's about a seventeen-minute piece, interviews with all of the Ryder Cup captains over the last fifty years. And I've always found it to be real compelling and given the fact that Medina is just around the corner, I thought that you all would enjoy it as well. But before I do, I want to mention one thing. Speaking of historical figures and significant accomplishments, I was fortunate to return just the other day from Pebble Beach where we got to spend an evening with the great Jack Nicholas and play golf in Pebble Beach the following day. But what made it significant and important was the fact that Tom Addis was the co-honoree with the great Jack Nicholas, receiving the Jim Langley Tribute to the Legends Award. So, Tom, congratulations.